Silent or something?
Yep, we did.
Okay, I was like, it got quiet quick. I'm like, wow. Thought I lost my audio again.
Yeah, struggling time on Monday.
I had, I did a reconfiguration of my computer and it sounds better.
Well, I guess there are advantages to having a COVID-19 kind of, kind of meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can go everywhere.
You can go anywhere.
That's right.
Yeah.
This conference will now be recorded.
Oh, okay.
Are being recorded now. And welcome everyone this evening. It's welcome to December. I'll call the meeting to order and then Matt, if you could put up the pledge allegiance and if can recite it to yourself in the comforts of your own home. Don't see it yet. Matt, where you put there, here it comes. Okay.
Yeah. Do you see it now?
Yes, we do. Thank you. Okay, thank you. I know it's still not the same as being in the council chambers when it comes to our flag salute. So next is roll call and Allison, could you do roll call please?
Mike Sykes.
I'm here.
Bessie Johnson.
I'm here too.
Alex Johnson, the second.
Here.
Rich Kellam.
I'm here for.
Bill Coburn.
Here.
Dick Olson.
Here.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Next is a special presentation, which is, you know, a nice one. We're in the council chambers so we can all be able to really see everybody that's present and be able to, you know, congratulate them and thank them for their historic preservation of their properties. So I think David, are you going to be leading off on the awards?
Sure. This is really nice that we could bring this to you tonight because these are awards that have been delayed for several months because of the COVID situation that we found ourselves in. And so Carrie, I believe you'll be starting off the proceedings and Bill has a PowerPoint that will be used to accompany this. So Matt, is it possible to make Bill Riles the presenter?
Yes, one second.
Okay, thank you very much. And I'll step out of the way and let them speak. Thank you.
Got to find him on the list here. I've had a lot of people tonight. Oh, there we go. Somebody's. Oh, there we go. Okay, great.
Okay, I'll get started while you pull that up, Bill. Good evening. My name is.
Is it up now? Should be up.
It is up, yes. So good evening. My name is Carrie McQuillan and I'm the Chair of the Albany Landmarks Commission. On behalf of Albany Landmarks Commission, I would like to thank the council and our mayor for inviting us here tonight to present our annual awards. As many of you know, the landmarks commission presents an award ceremony each year to highlight projects and individuals for their outstanding contributions to our historic districts. Our historic districts are only as vital as the people who live and work there. Before we actually dive into our landmarks awards, I'd like to start with a quick recognition that our partners would like to make. Our partners at the Albany Downtown Association asked for this and it's a group that does excellent work promoting and enhancing our historic districts. So the Albany Downtown Association appreciates this opportunity to share in recognizing an award winning downtown revitalization project alongside the landmarks awards recipients. AK Carpets Be Still Lofts owner Andrea Still was selected as a winner of the Albany Downtown Association's 2020 Revitalization Awards for the, for best upstairs renovation. Project took a former storage space and created five upscale residential lofts. The project no, not only adds to the downtown living inventory, but the new residents add to the prosperity of downtown restaurants, retail and service businesses. This project also received statewide recognition, winning the 2020 Oregon Main Street Excellence Revitalization Award for Best Upper Floor Rehabilitation. Thank you so much Andrea. And we actually just got the opportunity to see a video of the space and it is, it's quite remarkable. And so now getting back to our landmarks awards, historic districts are saved and preserved one building at a time. Each year we choose from a variety of candidates in several categories for our recognition. Historic preservation is hard work. It is expensive and demanding. We on landmarks believe that it is important to recognize those people and projects that have contributed in meaningful way to preservation and the vitality of our historic districts. We really couldn't do it without you. Our first category tonight is for residential construction and preservation in, in Hackelman District. To present that award, we have Kathy LaSour, landmarks member since 2015. Kathy?
Hi, everyone. This category is for residential restoration and reconstruction in the Hackelman District. While technically located on the edge of Hackelman's district. See, this award is dedicated to the notion that every building matters. When Paul and Mitzi Dykast purchased 834th Avenue, they had a pretty good idea what they were up against. This wasn't their first rodeo. With their daughter Sophie as a partner, this would be the 20th neglected building that Dykast had rescued. Quite a record. Many of our historic structures have fallen into disrepair over the years. Damage can be expensive and expensive to repair. Taking on these projects is not for the faint of heart. While many builders would run screaming into the night or order up the dozers, Dykast could see the potential in this simple turn of the century cottage and they embraced it. Today, this wonderful 1250 square foot home constructed in 1900, as back from the edge of extinction, it stands reborn. A beautiful example of the value of every structure in our districts, no matter how modest, for their courage and excellence in restoration and reconstruction in the Hackelman's District. The landmark commission recognizes Paul Mitzi and Sophie Dykast for 834th Avenue. And thank you all.
I don't know if Paul Mitzi or Sophie is here, but if you'd like to say a word, we'd love to hear, hear a little bit about your project.
I think Sophie is.
Look, I convinced them to come too, but they're hiding off camera. Well, I saw that my name was in the agenda and it was a big surprise, but really all of the credit for finding this house and seeing the vision initially came from, from my parents. So they deserve all of the credit for finding this place and, and putting in all of the hard work. I joined in when it had been cleaned up and there, where was sheet rock going in and then I got to put my touches on it from there. But it's been such a really fun project and we appreciate the support and the interest from everybody in the community. We were on the parlor tour last Christmas and had so much fun just showing it off. So it's been a really great project. Thank you for, for recognizing us.
Thank you.
Of course. Thank you all for the hard work that you put into it.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much Kathy and congratulations on, again to Sophie and, and family. Next Chad Robinson will present an award for residential restoration and reconstruction in the Montith district. Chad?
Thank you, Carrie. This award for restoration and reconstruction in the Montith is for the Barrett House at 637 Fifth Avenue Southwest. Built in 1909, the so-called transitional box style was ahead of its time, bridging the gap between more ornate styles that came before and the wave of modern craftsman style that would later come to dominate residential construction. This home exemplifies the period of dramatic change occurring in the early 20th century. With strong, clean detailing, gentle roof slopes and wide eaves to the wraparound porch, this grand old home was built by Mr. And Mrs. JJ Barrett, who owned and operated Barrett Brothers, a store in Albany that sold new modern machinery alongside harnesses, hardware and saddles for the fading horse and buggy age. For years, this beautiful home sat empty and deteriorating. It became the site of many municipal code violations, even inviting an article from Hasso Haring that headlined Albany Historic Home, All Boarded Up. This wonderful structure was purchased and restored by Mark and Tina Signer of Valley Homes Incorporated. Mark and Tina have worked in our historic districts for over 30 years on over 100 projects ranging from repairs and remodels to complete restorations of both residential and commercial buildings. Mark loves the detail and craftsmanship that he finds in these historic treasures. Quote, "Working on these buildings is like learning from the old masters." For a truly transformational restoration and reconstruction of a residential home. Mark and Tina. Montith District Landmarks Awards, Mark and Tina of Valley Homes for the Barrett House at 637 Fifth Avenue Southwest.
Mark and Tina, if you'd like to say a word, that would be great. I also want to add my little tidbit here that I actually live in the house. The, the son of the Barretts was the first owner of my house. So there it's, we're a big family in this town.
Thank you guys so much for the award. We really appreciate it. It was a super fun house to do. I grew up just down the street on Fifth Street and then moved to Kalapuyia and Fifth. And so I remember being in the house when the Darwin and Zella Mae lived there. So it was really sad to go in and see how badly it had been deteriorated and they had squatters and stuff. And so it was really fun to redo it and kind of relive growing up on Fifth Street. And the people that we have sold it to, I'm sure you all know are wonderful people and kind of a multi-generational house at this point. And I know they're going to take really good care of it and appreciate it very much. So it was real fun to do. So thank you guys so much for your acknowledgement. We really appreciate it. And it was a great house to do and we're looking for the next one.
Thank you so much and congratulations, Mark and Tina. And thank you, Chad.
You.
So next Keith Cole Cow will present our lifetime achievement award for outreach, education and knowledge in support of our historic districts. Keith?
Thank you, Carrie. I'm honored and pleased to present the award tonight for outreach, education and knowledge in support of Albany's historic districts. I've had the honor of working with this person on the landmarks commission for the entirety of my two terms of service and know he has served many years before I joined the commission. I've witnessed firsthand his tireless efforts, considerable knowledge and true heart in the art and craft of historic preservation. Over the years, he has achieved a lasting impact on our historic community. You've heard the term unsung hero in. You've heard the term unsung hero in reference to someone who would rather work every day, making the world a better place than to seek recognition or self-promotion. History tells us it is often these unsung heroes that have the greatest impact in our communities. I'm honored tonight to present the Landmarks Award for Outreach, Education, and Knowledge in Support of Albany's Historic Districts to Mr. Larry Preston of Remodeling and Repair. Larry is a skilled carpenter and contractor who has practiced his craft in our historic districts for 40 years. While having completed well over 100 large projects and small, Larry would like to retire, but keeps getting called back to the districts he loves for just one more project. Larry is a true pillar of knowledge and support in the historic community. Tonight, we acknowledge Larry for his expertise and tireless patience as a resource in the district. He's always there to answer questions and assist any way he can help homeowners and residents of our districts with sage advice and outstanding insight. On behalf of landmarks and the many, many citizens of Albany, myself included, that he has advised and educated over the years, we are proud to present the Landmarks Award tonight for outreach, education, and knowledge in support of the districts to you, Mr. Larry Preston. From all of us, thank you, Larry, and big congratulations.
Larry, if you want to say a few words here, you're welcome to. I also can't resist adding a tidbit to each of these, I guess. I also wanted to mention that as Larry served on the commission, I've served the same two terms that Keith has. It was always striking to me how people who thought that they might be in a really, in a position of conflict actually found themselves getting a lot of really good advice and excellent education from Larry that was actually truly helpful to them in their projects.
Thanks a lot, you guys. I appreciate all the nice words. I've never been accused of being a pillar before, but I really do appreciate it. And it felt good to be a part of everything that was downtown in all these years, 30 years. I care about the downtown, and I care about our historic districts and our people that are in it, and it's been a joy for me to serve. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Larry, for all your service. Next, Jolene Thompson will present our award for commercial restoration projects. Jolene?
Thank you so much, Carrie. I am proud and honored to present the award for commercial restoration. The award tonight is for a very special building and project. The Cumberland Church at the intersection of Santee Am and Main was constructed in 1892. It is a superior example of the Queen Anne style and the only Queen Anne church in Albany. Commonly known as the Main Street Church, the Cumberland has been a graceful inspiration for East Albany for 128 years. Vacant for many years, this treasured landmark was acquired by the City of Albany to make room for traffic improvements at the Santee Am and Main intersection. Slated for demolition, Mayor Sharon Canopa pulled together up a task force to explore options and to rescue and repurpose this Queen Anne masterwork. Out of this task force grew the idea of moving Cumberland away from its current location to a lot owned by the city a few blocks away near Eleanor at Hackelman Park. A group of community-minded citizens came together to form a nonprofit named the Cumberland Community Events Center, a nod to their vision of the Main Street Church's future purpose. These ambitious and intrepid souls took initiative and began raising funds and envisioned a new life for the Cumberland as a much-needed community center and a resource for the Hackelman District and all of East Albany. As of today, through setbacks, skepticism, and the pandemic, this group of volunteers has purchased the building, acquired the new site, developed a wonderful design, amassed a war chest of well over $100,000 and counting, and it would take hours to tell the history and explain the many advantages to this new community center and what it will bring to the citizens of Albany. So, let me just say that Landmarks wishes to recognize tonight everyone who has devoted their time and energies to saving this irreplaceable Queen Anne masterwork. May it stand as an inspiration and indelible link to our past for future generations to come. The award tonight for commercial restoration goes to the Cumberland Church and Cumberland Community Events Center, represented tonight by Emma and her crew. Our deepest thanks to all of you.
Emma, are you here? Emma, are you here? Would you like to say a word?
I don't see her on.
Okay, wow.
I don't see Emma, but I would like to thank the City of Albany for working with us in doing the land transfer so we have a place to move this building and save it for future generations. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cameron.
Cameron.
Yep, and Jolene.
Yes. So, thank you so much, Jolene and Cameron, and all of the folks who worked on the Cumberland project and the donors as well who are making this dream a reality. It's an inspiration to all of us. Thank you again. For our last acknowledgement tonight, we have Bill Riles to present the Landmarks Legacy Award for Lifetime Achievement in Support of Our Historic Districts. Bill?
Okay, can everyone hear me? I'm not sure if my mic is unmuted.
Yeah, we can hear you.
Can anyone hear me? Okay, great. Thank you, Carrie, and thank you to the council for this opportunity to be here tonight. Our last award is for legacy. We have never given this award before, and we likely never will again. This award goes beyond dedication or sacrifice. It goes beyond a mere lifetime achievement. This award is for legacy. Not only does this person deserve our thanks for a lifetime of work, this person deserves the thanks of generations to come. I think you all know who I am talking about. I first met Sharon at South Albany High School. We were 15 years old. It seems like only yesterday. I suppose no one at the time would have predicted how profoundly she would change our town and all of our lives with it. But we saw the glimmer. We saw the promise. We knew she was bound for something special. We just didn't know she would bring us all along for the ride, and for that, I am eternally grateful. When Sharon began her work, frankly, things around here were a bit of a mess. Our little town was trapped in a downward spiral, a hollowing out that threatened our very foundations. Common wisdom held that the future belonged to fancy malls and big box stores with oceans of parking. People said we should just let our little historic town die quietly. But not Sharon. She had a different vision. She had a different idea. She believed our historic town was more than worth saving, that it was who we were, that our small businesses and restaurants and those old buildings were our real future. She had the idea that maybe we could find our future by honoring our past. Perhaps she was naive. Perhaps she didn't know the magnitude of the battles that lay before her. Perhaps she didn't care. She set to work anyway. From the start, she was a breath of fresh air, and it wasn't long before this town realized that breath was a force of nature. Sharon had vision. She had determination, but more than that, she believed in us. And soon, we believed in her. She believed together we could do anything, anything. We didn't need a Walmart to tell us who we were or what we could do. All we needed was each other. Today, our little town is breathing new life. The downtown has turned around. Our future is bright. And we have Sharon to thank for all of it. Her list of accomplishments and accolades would take all night. I would sum it up by simply saying that she served us with a grace, a vision, and a determination that is seldom seen in this world. She served us with a grace that borders on nobility. Sharon believed and believes in us, all of us. She saved us. She's the best of us. It is with great honor and considerable humility that Landmarks tonight presents the Award for Legacy in Support of Our Historic Districts to Mayor Sharon Canopa. Madam Mayor, let me just say, we owe you a debt that can never be paid.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Was it a big surprise? Billy, you spelt my name wrong.
Oh, Pam thought I did. Oh, sorry.
Thank you. It's an honor. The words were just beautiful. And yeah, I'm not words right now, but thank you so much, so.
Sharon, we just can't thank you enough. This town owes you a debt beyond measure.
Thank you. Thank you, Bill.
Yes, thank you so much. And for your encouragement of all of us in our roles within the city, you've been a pillar.
Thank you. Just make sure it keeps on going. There's still a lot more to do, so. You know, there's still, it all goes back to what I talk about, a vision. Everybody had their vision for the community of revitalizing it. We've come a long way, but there's more to do, folks, so. But thank you. Thank you.
Well, thank you all so much. That brings us to the end of our ceremony tonight. Our thanks to everyone, and here's wishing all of you a prosperous and historic new year.
Yo, this is Bessie. You left the mayor speechless. I don't think that's ever happened before.
Oh, I'm speechless too. I had to write that down. I thought I was gonna lose it halfway through, to be honest.
Okay. Was that it? Okay, all right. Thank you, folks. Thank you so much. So. Yeah, thank you. Next is the public hearing, and I'm going to open it at 7:41 PM. And the staff want to do a report, please? I need to take a break.
David Martino, planner. And boy, I don't know how to follow on with the presentation that landmarks just gave. Compared that to a fee resolution. I don't think I can top that, so. Thank you for your time. And so, what we're doing here tonight is we're proposing an adjustment fee. You might recall at the time we adopted the Development Code amendments here a couple of months ago. In those amendments, there's a new process called a Type III Adjustment. And what that will enable people to do is for those projects where clear and objective standards have to be followed. The adjustment process provides people relief. If they can find that they can meet the design standards or landscaping standards better than the current language, then it opens up the possibility that somebody can make that request. And that particular request requires discretion, and it's something that would end up going either to the landmarks, not landmarks, I'm sorry, the planning commission or the hearings board for a decision. And so, it does just provide that discretionary alternative, and it's most closely related to the process that we follow for variances. And so, you'll see that the fee that we're proposing for this new application type is the same as what we charge a major variance. What used to be called an adjustment process is now being called a minor variance. So, because we have a new name for it, we wanted to make sure that the fee schedule had both the minor and the major variance and the adjustment process as well. So, that's the resolution that's before you tonight.
Hey, anyone have any questions? The staff? All right. So, this is the public hearing, and there wasn't anybody that had signed up to speak. Is there anyone that is online that needed to, would like to comment on this public hearing? Okay, not seeing anyone. With that, I'll close the public hearing at 7:43 PM. And is there any other questions of staff? Or other words, you have a resolution that's on page five?
I'll move for adoption of the resolution.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion, Carrie?
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, David. That was a very quick public hearing. Next is business from the public. There wasn't anybody, anyone that had signed up at all the time except Lisa Groh with the Downtown Association wanted to say a few words, and then also Rebecca Bond. And I believe the two of them are on. Lisa, are you there?
Lisa?
You down there? I see her.
I don't see her.
I do. It's the LA. The initials.
LGA.
Oh, okay. All right.
LA on mine.
Mine too.
I think she's trying to get her camera to work. There we go.
Okay, there you are, Lisa.
Your audio is not working. Oh, there we go.
Think I'm on now. Wanted to thank you for the opportunity to share a quick downtown update with you this evening. I'm delighted to relay that our downtown merchants reported a Good Black Friday, which is unusual. Usually, folks go to the box stores. And we also had a very strong Small Business Saturday. Like to thank Mayor Canopa and the council for the Shop Small proclamation. It brought attention to downtown and small businesses throughout Albany, and I'm sure that helped a lot. We're excited. The community is choosing to shop local, and it's really helping. Our restaurants, though, are facing additional challenges with the return to takeout-only. We're asking that everyone support our downtown restaurants and help them get through these extremely tough times. I'd like to express our thanks to the city team for all their help this season. The holiday snowflakes are up, and the community tree is in place as of yesterday, and the decorations and lights will be announcement and be able to join us. This is how we're still able to share with the community without creating a crowd during these times of COVID. Also to do with COVID, we've had some funding reductions due to less folks traveling, and we're asking the community to help the Albany Downtown Association with some projects. Currently, we're holding a fundraiser for our beloved hanging basket program. Individuals can sponsor a single basket, and there's also a couple of levels for business sponsorships. Information on the hanging basket fundraiser is available on the Albany Downtown Association website, and you can also contact our office. So, thank you again for your time this evening, and that's all I have.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Lisa. You were kind of breaking up there a few times on my end, so I hope everybody was able to hear you okay. But thank you so much, and we sure hope there's going to be a good season for all the businesses downtown this year. So, and thank you for promoting it all and making sure in there to assist them. You do a great job, and we really appreciate Downtown Association. Thank you. And now I see Rebecca.
Hello. Good evening, Mayor and council. It's nice to see you all looking well, and thank you for the opportunity. It's nice to have so many positive things to share tonight. I have three highlight activities to highlight. One is our holiday scene window displays and food drive that's presented by Christmas Storybook Land, and I'd like to really give them a And I'd like to really give them a shout out for an organization that can really pivot. They started out, you know, with the walk-through, the Lynn County Fairgrounds. It's a huge fundraiser for them and an opportunity to raise food for fish. And with the guidelines, they weren't able to do that. So they decided to have the exterior drive-through, and with additional guidelines, they weren't able to do that. So instead, they have put the Storybook Land scenes throughout downtown. They've turned it into a scavenger hunt, encouraging people to go downtown and take their picture, and are a contest to win prizes, and of course, to ask people to donate food. The Visitors Association is one of those locations, and we're super proud to be part of that. We also have our 33rd Annual Holiday Light Program, the Nighttime Magic Program. And we thought it would be really important this year to make sure that we have a lot of bright lights for these dark days of winter. And we had some partners step up, Bercham's Metals, Robin Van Rosman with Town and Country Realty, and Hospitality Vision are sponsors, and they helped us to get some really great prizes to entice residents to decorate their houses. Some of the prizes came from Phoenix Inn, the Historic Carousel, Cibberus, South Paws, Midway Farms, Natty Dresser, the Pix Theater, Urban Ag, and Bodhi Bakery. And all these places are wonderful places that people will love to get gift cards from. So we've had a lot of people already decorating their houses. They're gonna enter their houses by December 7th, and the winners will be determined by popular vote. So the voting will commence from December 10th through the 20th with the winners announced on the 22nd. The nice thing is, this is an activity that's safe for families. They can jump in their own car and drive around. They can download the app for free, the Albany Explorer app, and there will be a Google map of all the houses that are participating, and we'll also have the list on our website. And then, yes, there will be a historic tour for the holidays. It's gonna look a lot different this year. It's gonna be a porch tour so that we can make sure that people are safe, so they can walk on the sidewalk and see there are 12 different porches that have signed up. They're in the Montith district. It could be a really nice walk or drive-through. They're also going to have a scavenger hunt. One of the recipients of the award, the Barrett House, is one of the houses that's signed up for the porch tour, so you'll want to really look for that one. And the tickets for that are free. The Montith Society wanted to make sure that we had another activity that people could do safely, and so they're asking for donations if people feel so inclined. But the tickets will be free. People can download them from our website on the weekend before the tour. And then they can also get a physical ticket on the day of the tour, and that's Sunday, December 13th, and it runs from 2:00 to 7:00 PM. Now, we also have other ideas. If you need some ideas, we have our calendar of events on the AlbanyVisitors.com, and we have a blog of 10 safe and festive activities that people can do. There are our top 10 list, and we're happy to add more if there are others. But we wanted to also remind you that all of these activities are done. They're so much better when you have takeout from one of our locally owned restaurants. So be sure to support those restaurants when you're out and about for the holidays.
Okay, great. You guys are still, I mean, it is amazing, you know, with COVID, everything we would think would be shut down, but you kept things still going busy and lots of activities, and that's what we love about Albany. So thank you so much, Rebecca, and for your team and all your hard work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Was there any questions, Lisa or Rebecca? Counsel, did you have any questions? Okay, all right.
Mayor, I just wanted to tell Lisa and Rebecca both that, you know, even through this, you know, the businesses are having such a tough time. It is so nice to hear that they're still willing to participate, to give, to, you know, do anything they can for the downtown and actually all over the city. So I just want to say to you guys, you know, good work, because, you know, 2021's gotta be better, but you guys are really, really possible. Thank you.
Can I add something? May I?
Yes.
Thank you. I just want to say on behalf of all the restaurant owners in town, how much we appreciate what you all have both done. You're, you've been a real boost, even just now, both of you mentioned that this is really, you know, it's been super difficult for restaurants. And Benton County gets to open back up. Lynn County is still on takeout only. So you've been a real boost just by everything you've done and even by your words tonight. It just encourages my heart, the support we have from you and, you know, both organizations. I know it really means a lot to restaurant owners in particular, business owners in general. Thank you.
Yep. Thank you, Matilda. Thank you. It's a lot of hard work, and we sure appreciate everyone's work. So, thank you. Okay, I don't think there was anyone else, there wasn't anyone that had signed up for business from the public, but unless there was somebody that logged on. Okay, all right. Not seeing anyone. Thank you, folks. Next, we have item six. This is the first reading of ordinance, and this one is what we had on Monday, and discussion on Monday was over the work without permits. And is there any questions of staff on this before, or would you like to have Sean do the first reading?
I have a question.
Yeah, Rich, uh-huh.
Yeah, I had mentioned that there is a confusion about violations, the number of violations. The, you know, and it's on Exhibit A, civil penalties. In the case of a violation, you know, first violation, second violation, et cetera, a way of making sure that we don't take a violation that is an electrical permit and a violation that is a plumbing permit and a violation that is a building permit, and call that three violations and make that the third violation. Is there a way of changing that so that it's obvious there is no additive set of violations there? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yeah, okay.
Definitely can understand your concern there. I know the reason why we chose that specific language is that's what the state has adopted for their own process. So we try to mirror that as much as possible to stay defendable in that context. I definitely think, and I'll defer to Sean on the legality sense, I think there could be a way to infer that violations during a single occurrence wouldn't constitute the multiple violations in that provision. But I would defer to Sean on how that would need to be crafted.
We can, we can do it that way, Jonathan and Rich. Is that what you're asking? That one incident doesn't trigger three violations?
Right.
Okay.
Exactly. Without, without changing everything, changing the world, well, I'd like to have it changed.
And just to make sure that we understand, the thought that you would want us to have is the intent is still, in theory, we would apply the first violation potentially, as you said, three to four infractions if we needed to use it in that format, but it wouldn't move up to the second, third violation as the penalty is spelled out, correct?
Right, that three violations on one day is one instance, not three instances.
Yep, makes sense. Yeah, we can word it that way. Matt, go back in the, in the body of it.
And I'm happy, I'm happy to go along with whatever saying is that we're not voting on this specific thing today. We're voting on a, on a, what would end up being a, an ordinance that doesn't include this in its, in its body. So if we change it to something, so it fixes that, great, fine, let's do it.
Right, so you're okay with adopting the ordinance tonight as stated? It's just the overall enforcement procedures is what you wanted to clarify.
Just change what it says, penalties. If we understand that's what it means. You know, I heard, I heard what you, you know, what you said, and I know what you meant, but that's not what you wrote.
Yeah, Bill?
But it'd be better to clean it up, Rich, and then vote on it in two weeks. I don't think it's an urgent situation. I agree.
I'm good with that.
Okay.
Let's, let's do that. I prefer to do that.
All right.
Okay, great.
You're okay with the other counselors?
That's a great idea, Bill.
I see Bessie-
I agree with Rich, but that's a great idea, Bill.
Okay, all right. We will hold this ordinance over.
Mayor?
Yes, uh-huh.
The one thing that I'd like to bring up on this, there's sometimes on one, one, how do I put it? In some instances, when a mechanical contractor changes something or does something in a home or commercial residence, he needs a plumbing permit, a mechanical permit, and an electrical permit to do the job. So in that instance, that, in my mind, that would be three violations, but it would be one violation for each trade that didn't get a permit. So the plumber didn't get a permit, the mechanical didn't get a permit, and the electrical didn't get a permit. That's one violation for each contractor that didn't get a permit. Does that make sense? But I agree with what you're saying, that we have to spell it out differently, but there are some instances where on some jobs, there's three, three different permits required depending on what is being done.
I agree with you, Mike. I think staff needs to just take a minute to think about the wording, because you could walk onto a project where you have three different companies, nobody got permits. It's everybody's first violation. Or you could have a situation that you described, because many contractors carry multiple licenses, and maybe one contractor was supposed to get an electrical, plumbing, and a mechanical. Again, that's his first violation. It wouldn't be three violations for that contractor.
The language has to be clear.
On that, but.
Okay, Rich, and I see Dick's hand.
Yeah, I get that there are three different things. But if you're talking about three violations from three different, you know, you're talking about $1,000. Now, this is if everything falls apart. And the guy says, no, no, I won't do it. There's $1,000 against each thing, but that is, does not turn it into the $5,000 that three violations would be.
That's correct.
Okay, so I get, yeah.
I agree with Bill. Let's go back and-
Yeah.
We can vote on it after they clean the language up.
Okay, Dick, any question?
Oh, not a question. I just wanted to say that I think Richard's point, and he made it, is that the fines shouldn't double, triple, and quadruple for the four different violations on the first offense. I think that's what he's trying to say.
Exactly.
Yeah, yep. He should just get fined for each one, but you shouldn't escalate the fines up to, I guess it could be up to about $10,000 perhaps if you, if you had four, three, or four violations.
Yeah.
The way it's presently written. I think that's excessive.
Okay, Alex, did you have a question?
I think we're talking about two different cases. I think what Richard said is perfect. And also, Mike is saying things, there's three different contractors, and each one's required to get a license. Then that's their first occurrence for each one. It wouldn't be three different ones. So I think that's- Language in.
I think, I see, I see staff nodding. Yep, okay, and if we understand that, let's fix it and come back and put this in place.
I agree.
So this will come back at the December 16th council meeting. I was almost thinking we could probably try to, if it ends up being a short council meeting on December 14th for the work session, maybe staff can slip it in on that meeting. But other words, we have a joint meeting afterwards. So it all depends on what's all gonna be on that agenda that- Okay, anything else? All right.
Thank you.
Six B is removed, so the next is seven, and this is updating the attendance policy for citizen advisory groups. Holly, were you going to talk on this one?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, mayor and counselors. So this item starts on page 14 of your agenda packet, and I'll just speak very briefly to this item since we did discuss most of it at the October 6th work session. We did make a couple of changes from the draft that you saw in October based on council's feedback at that meeting. So counselors wanted to be notified sooner in the process when a board member has had several unexcused absences. So we've amended the resolution so that members need to notify their appointing council member if they're gonna be absent from the board for more than 60 days. So up to 60 days, they just need to be sure and notify their board chair and staff liaison in advance of the meeting, which is already the requirement. More than 60 days, they would need to notify their appointing council member and then follow up and send that approval to their board chair and staff liaison ahead of those missed meetings. Since we have some groups that meet monthly and others that meet twice monthly, some meet quarterly, or even just on an as-needed basis, we do recognize that a 60-day policy, it has a different impact depending on the advisory group's meeting schedule. But it does seem to be a more equitable measurement than tracking the number of meetings given that variety of meeting schedules. Secondly, the resolution's been updated to make it clear that it applies to all boards and commissions as well as committees, work groups, task forces, et cetera. And that's whether they're standing ad hoc or special. We typically use citizen advisory groups as sort of a catch-all for all of our various boards, but the term advisory is notably left off of some of our groups. So we wanted to be sure to make it clear that it applies to all. Lastly, I'll just reiterate that with this change, the aim is simply to outline clear expectations for attendance and meeting participation, and to provide staff with a process to follow if we have cases of persistent absenteeism. The city manager's office will coordinate with all of our staff liaisons and will take steps to ensure that all of our current and newly appointed board members are aware of this policy if council chooses to adopt it. So with that, I thank you for your time, and I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Questions? We had this at a work session, member council, and then you had staff make changes. So, any more questions? You do have a resolution on page 16.
I would move for the adoption of the resolution.
I'll second it.
Okay, any question? Okay, all those say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Holly.
Thank you all.
Next is the Ward of Contract. This is the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant Clearwell Rehabilitation. It starts on page 18, and I think Stacy was online. Yes, Stacy?
Evening, mayor and counselors. So for this project, staff is recommending council award a contract to DN Tanks Incorporated in the amount of $446,500 for construction of the Vine Street Water Treatment Plant Clearwell Project. This award recommendation is for the base bid, Schedule A, plus the bid alternate that was included as Schedule B. We received three bids for this project ranging from the low bid up to the high bid of approximately $556,000 for Schedule A plus B. The Clearwell is a concrete structure. It's located underneath the two-story filtration building at the Vine Water Treatment Plant. The Clearwell collects water- The Clearwell collects water that has been filtered and treated before it is pumped to the Maple Reservoir and then distributed out to the water system. The, the basement for this project, schedule A includes improvements that will provide waterproofing to address leakage that has been observed through the walls. And it also includes improvements to increase the strength of the Clearwell structure. Work's going to include construction of a cast-in-place concrete floor and installation of four-inch Shot Creek walls with rebar for reinforcement. This work will need to be completed while the Clearwell is drained and offline. The, the bid alternate, which was included as schedule B, will include application of an epoxy coating to the ceiling. And then there's twenty interior concrete columns inside the Clearwell that would also be coated. Schedule B work also requires the Clearwell to be drained and offline. Coordinating this work with the base bid with the waterproofing and the structural repairs will reduce the amount of time that the water treatment plant is required to be offline in addition to the, to the cost savings that will be realized. Even awarding schedule A plus B, this project is estimated to be approximately forty-eight thousand dollars under the budget for the project. Is there any questions?
Yeah, Bessie?
Yes, Stacy, I was just wondering, I know Pacific excavation, but have we worked with D N, D N Tanks Inc. before?
No, no, we haven't. So staff did reach out. So the consultant on this job, Marie Smith, we talked with them about D N Tanks. They're out of Beaverton, Oregon. Marie Smith actually has worked with them many times over, over the past decade. They've, they've actually observed them working on over, over a dozen projects and so they come highly recommended.
Yeah, that's great. So I'm sure it's, it's a specified task. So that's good. Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I was quite pleased to see the bid really coming lower than what was estimated. So that was good news. So counsel, what would you like to do with this item or do you have other questions?
Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, any, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. Thank you, Stacy. Next is the adoption of the consent calendar. If there isn't any items that you need to pull off this evening for discussion, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move for adoption of the consent calendar. I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed and okay, motion carried. And we're cruising right along. Next is business from the council. Bessie, you're up on the top of my screen.
Oh. No, I just, with the consent calendar, I wasn't going to hold it off or anything. But it just shows that it was very, very good to see that so many people participated in, in the election and there were a lot of close, close competitions. And so I just, I think it's, it's a great thing and we're just that's all.
All right, Mike?
I have nothing.
Okay, Bill?
Nothing tonight, thank you.
All right, Rich?
Nothing tonight.
And Alex?
I have nothing tonight, Mayor.
Okay, and Dick?
Oh, yeah, I noticed a nice big sign on the corner of Knights and I think it's Oak Street encouraging people to shop locally. I think the sign is about eight by ten or something like that. And I'm wondering who's responsible for it. And I'd like to say thank you for doing that. It encouraged me to go order some books from the bookstore there on Pacific Avenue. So, yeah.
That
Thank you whoever brought that in on that trailer and put it up.
Anybody know where it came from?
I believe, Mayor, those are sponsored by the Chamber and they helped put them together. We have a few lawn signs that are available that say the same thing.
Okay, thank you. Over about fifty years, I haven't been much of a fan of the Chamber, but I'll say thank you to them on this occasion.
You're talking about the one with Car Craft, Councilor Olson?
Am I what?
The ones in front of the Car Craft, the Chevron Station?
I still didn't understand what you said.
Yes, that's, that's what he's talking about.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, maybe the Chamber to put them up and then that's Gail Boardy and Ryan Boardy who own that business there. So.
Yeah, the car wash there, yeah.
Okay, Lisa, did you, did you know more about it? Oh, we can't hear you. Lisa? Nope, we can't hear you. Lisa, if you can hear me. Campaign? I didn't get what she said. Anybody else?
I heard it was not illegible.
I think she said it was part of the local business campaign.
Okay. Thank you, Lisa. Small business campaign. Yeah. Oh, I just got a text coming through. It was Extreme Graphics that did it. I'm save Albany now. That's what it is. Save Albany now. Yep, yep. Oh, I think Matt, Matt just put the, put it up on his screen. Matt?
Try again.
Try it again. Oh, there it is. Okay, yep, that's it.
What I'm talking about is a much bigger one.
Yes.
Okay, but no, Extreme Graphics aren't, you know, Meeker had done up those signs and been really promoting it. And then they've been doing Facebook Live events too at certain businesses. So with the small businesses to help promote. It always, it takes a team effort, folks. So, but yeah, thank you. Okay, that was it from business from the council. I didn't have anything this evening. Peter, did you?
Yes, Mayor, if you'd indulge me with a few minutes, I'm going to ask Matt Harrington to put something up for you to look at. You know that today marks the end of the two weeks, the two-week freeze that the governor's office directed. And then tomorrow marks the start of a different regime of guidance. And when that screen comes up, you'll see that it's called a sector risk level guidance chart. And I would tell you that typically, if there's such a thing as a, a normal emergency, we use Lynn County for normal emergency situations. And by that, I would mean emergency declarations and resource support, et cetera. But this is anything but a normal situation. So from the city's perspective, from our perspective, we're considering North Albany to be part of Benton County. So if you'll see, if you look to the right there, you'll see high risk and extreme risk. The difference being that Benton County has been classified as being high risk and Lynn County as extreme risk. So specifically, if you go down on the left side to eating and drinking establishments and then you walk it over, you can see the differences in what restaurants are allowed in Benton County and what they're allowed in Lynn County. So we're seeking verification of this or confirmation that we're interpreting it correctly from the Office of Emergency Management, the Oregon Health Authority and the Governor's Office. And I'll let you all know what we hear from them. But for now, this is, this is how we're interpreting it. And I'll send this, this graph out. It's available from quite a few different sources. But I'll make sure that each of the counselors gets a copy of it. Any questions?
Question?
Yes, sir.
It's my understanding that the basis for, for this is how many cases, how many deaths, how many, et cetera, per unit number of, of population. Is that correct?
Yeah, and they, they're planning on reviewing it every two weeks and coming out with new evaluations.
Yeah, okay. That's, I, I think it's a lot better than, than the other one-size-fits-all. But I'd point out twenty-four thousand students that may or may not be around right now. Not causing a problem, not getting sick here skews the numbers. That's a large portion of Benton County's population. And if they're, if they went back home and are doing things from home, like I know in the case of, of the veterinary school, they're not doing anything. They have their people doing online and only online, not giving them any refunds and so forth. And so some of them are leaving. Anyway, I just, I like this system better, but it ain't perfect. I guess that, you know. That's all I have.
Any other questions? And Mayor, while I was talking, I got some clarification as well that the shop local campaign was started by Extreme Graphics and other small businesses, including the Chamber and the Downtown Association.
Great, yep. I said a team effort, boy, to really get out there and promote the businesses. So, yeah, it's great. Thank you. Anything else, Peter?
No, ma'am.
Okay, all right. Does any other counselors have anything else this evening? So, all right. With that, then our next meeting would be December fourteenth, the work session. And at five fifteen will be a joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And then the sixteenth would be our regular meeting. So with that, we are adjourned and have a good evening, folks.